Please stand, as Commissioner Doyle will lead us on our invocation and Commissioner Shoemaker will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we're so thankful for all your blessings. We thank you for this Thanksgiving week coming up. We thank you for all you do for us, not only at Thanksgiving, but during our year, Lord. Be with each one here tonight. Guide us and direct us and give us the wisdom to do the things that you would have us do and give us safe passage as we return home. We ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, commissioners. That brings us to Sabbath corn. We have a full slate, so we do have a corn eight of eight. Approval agenda. Nikki, before we vote on that, I would like to make a quick change and in the last three public hearings, move Indigo Acres to the final one. And that way, we can go through the other three fairly quickly. It's going to be a lot of discussion and a lot of people want to speak, so we'll get those people out of here or at least give them the option to get out and then we'll do that one. So with that, if that's suitable to the other commissioners, any other changes, Nikki, other than that one?
No, sir, not one.
Okay. I have a motion approved with the change in the order of the public hearing. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All right, that passes unanimously. Nikki, the public approval of minutes, October 27th, regular meeting. Do I have a motion to present it or someone find errors?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All right, that passes. That brings us to the public comment period. Nikki, has anyone signed up for the public comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have, I believe, two.
Okay.
The first one is Deborah Chambers and then I have a Morgan Hopkins, but it might have a line drawn through it. I can't tell.
Okay.
Okay. You signed up for public comment. That's your signature? Okay. All right, then we do have two.
Oh, yeah, I wanted to do the other one, so I left me.
Okay, so we have one individual.
Just one, then?
Ms. Hopkins states she's not signing up for public comment. She signed up for something else, but Ms. Chambers, Deborah Chambers, is signing for public comment.
Okay. Please come forward, state your full name, ma'am, address. You have three minutes.
My name's Deborah Ayr Chambers. I am a lifelong resident of Buckingham County, having lived on White Rock Road most of my entire childhood and adult life, and then on Rock Island. My concern that I am coming to present to you tonight is about the proposed project named the Indigo Acres. And I feel that that should not be passed or because I have concerns about traveling and safety of the residents, of the people of the county. My mom and I were involved in a really serious accident, December 12th, 2022. She had multiple surgeries. I had multiple surgeries and we're still continuing to suffer with problems related to an accident that was involved riding that curve right before or beyond Indigo Acres. And I think that with people coming out of the county perhaps and from different areas, they may have a trouble with the directions and the roads, therefore possibly causing accidents. So that is my concern at this time.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
All right, I'll now close the public comment period and go to the old business. Our first public hearing is for the Central Virginia Christian School. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant prior to the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and I'll open up the public hearing for that application. Do we have anyone signed up, Nikki?
We do not have anyone signed up for this public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir, he is.
Mr. Beasley, would you come forward, sir? State your full name, address.
Kemper Beasley, 1467 Planters Town Road, Dearwin, Virginia.
Okay.
Representing Central Virginia Christian School.
Very good. Thank you, sir. You want to give us, I know you weren't here because you had a previous engagement and couldn't make it. Do you want to give a quick narrative of what you're trying to do with the rezoning?
Sure, yes, sir. Appreciate the opportunity to come here today. Central Virginia Christian School is going through a process of expansion in really two ways. One is the school is adding a class per grade. This is a gradual process. We've done this through pre-K and kindergarten. Next year, anticipating adding first grade and so forth. And then also, Central Virginia Christian School is adding a high school and that process has started. It's currently in temporary housing. So as a result of this expansion, we need to expand our facilities. Our current facilities will not house the number of students that this will cause. And then also, as you add a high school, we need an adequate gym and other facilities, science rooms, things of that nature. And so therefore, Central Virginia Christian School has entered into an agreement with James River Equipment to, an agreement to use their land and eventually purchase upon their moving to a different location. And Central Virginia Christian School has plans and a site plan, I believe that's part of the package, to build two facilities, one being an academic building, the other a gym, a multipurpose, both gym and stage area for fine arts, building adjoining each other. And those facilities would be partly on, if you want to call it the James River Equipment property, and then also partly on the land that Buckingham County sold us, I guess about a year ago. And so the Central Virginia Christian School is asking for the property to be rezoned, Village Center. Village Center is the only zoning district that allows a private school by right. This would mirror the zoning for the property that was purchased from the county last year. And then as a result of this zoning request for the James River Equipment property, we are also asking that our current property where we're housed, and of course, we're under CUP, everything is going well, but at this point, if for the, just we think it would make sense for the entire campus to be the same zoning, which would be Village Center. And so that is what we're asking and certainly any questions you have, I'll be glad to do my best to answer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Beasley. Now, yes, Pete, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Beasley, do you know, can you tell us what your intended population for that school will be ultimately?
That's a good question. I'll update. So currently, just to let you know, we go from pre-K to 10th grade and currently, I believe our enrollment is around 270. And so each year, we would add 15 or 20. You are speaking regarding the actual academic building what houses our upper grades. I think probably the most would be around 100 students, I'd anticipate. Well, I guess maybe if we were 40, it would, forgive me, I'm thinking on the fly. No, I guess about 150 would be the student population possibly in that building, plus staff.
So housing 150 students, how many do you have now? What's your active population now?
Currently, I think we're 267.
267 and you're telling me your total is going to be 150?
No, I'm sorry, sir. I apologize. I meant the building that would be on this site.
Right.
Yes, sir. The building that would be on this site would approximately be 150 students. We would still anticipate using the current building, which currently we probably house 240 students because the high school's in temporary housing at this point.
So you'll be a total student population around 400 people?
I think, and forgive me, I was a history major. Math is something I'm on the fly here, but yes, I think very well we could get to that number with the full expansion.
Would that be your maximum or would you intend to expand further?
We, right now, our expansion project is two grades per class, I mean, two classes per grade and then the high school. So I think it with that, even with this expansion, it'd be very difficult to expand more. Who knows what the Lord may have in store for us, but I think with the land we have, I think it'd be difficult to expand so far. Your intent is to remain a school that can be hands-on, that is affordable for our area. And so I don't anticipate us getting larger than that.
How long would it take you to get to your total of 400, do you think? In other words, how long is it going to take you to get this other academic building done?
To get the building done? Well, so two, the hope would be that the building would be complete by August of 2027, so before the 2027, 2008 academic year. Now, at that point, we should be at full capacity or at least able to be at full capacity for our high school. We'll continually add classes for each grade level and that will continue for the next seven years. And so to answer your question, it would be seven years from now before we would get to our total expansion because we add a class per year.
And have you considered all the egress and ingress and, I mean, are you okay with the roads and all this other stuff? I mean, with that population of students and?
Yes, sir. And we've, as you may have seen, Maxine Associates has done a great job preparing a site plan and obviously certainly mindful of traffic and then the site plan in itself on the land as far as directing traffic and things of that nature. And for the first time, we've had to consider parking for students. We're not there yet, but one day, possibly next year, we'll have high school students driving, so that's something obviously we have to anticipate.
And you do have the land for that, even with the expansion, that'll give you room for those students to bring their cars as well?
Correct, yes, sir.
And this land that you're going to get from James River, you say you're going to build a building on it. Is there an agreement between you and them to purchase that?
It is, yes, sir.
Those are the only questions I have.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question. Mr. Beasley, I noticed that you are chairman of the board of directors for the school.
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Are you acting as their attorney also? I'm just.
No, ma'am.
Legal?
No, not in that capacity, no, ma'am.
Okay, your role here is?
Correct, I should have clarified that. I'm here in the role of chairman of the board of directors, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. That was it, yeah.
Any other questions from the commissioners this time?
Hey, we're talking about changes zoning. Are you going to do it on the part that y'all just got from the, tried to place or are you going to do the whole thing?
We're asking to do the whole thing. So then that would allow the entire parcel to be zoned, Village Center. So then when James River Equipment does make that move, we'd be able to utilize the entire property, even though the current building plans are just on the southern end of that property. But yes, asking for the whole property, yes.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioners? Mr. Beasley, thank you for answering our questions. You can go ahead and sit down. We'll turn this over to the commission.
One quick one. If I look at the application, it says basically to obtain a zoning map amendment from M1. So the concern I have is the application only references the land from, so is this going to change so that we can, I mean, I don't have any problem with zoning the whole area, but does the application have to change?
The two parcels. It talks about 138.
That six, that six plus acres is the one that the county just sold?
No, sir.
Oh, that's different, okay.
Not excluded in this because that's all.
B.C.
B.C. 1.
Okay, all right.
This is the existing school.
I'm clear.
Yes, sir, okay.
I'm clear, thank you.
Uh huh.
Okay. It's a pleasure, the commissioner.
I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve this and send it on to the board supervisors.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, we will vote. Mr. Beasley, that moves forward to board supervisor. Thank you, sir. All right, we're skipping to Kaufman. Nikki, is there any, at this point, anybody signed up for public hearing?
No, sir, there is no one signed up for the public hearing.
All right, let the record show that I opened the public hearing for the Virginia Christian School and closed it, even though I forgot. Anyway, all right, do any commissioners have any questions before I open up the public hearing? All right, I will now open a public hearing and you say we have no one signed up?
No, sir, there is no one signed up.
Okay, I'll now close it and is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman is here.
Mr. Kaufman, you go on up, sir. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I have just one quick question, really just, has any, from your initial introduction last month, anything changed in your operation, your number of hours you're planning to? I think we asked about traffic, tractor trailer, I think anything changed?
No, nothing changed.
Okay, all right. Is anything you want to say to us before I turn it over to the commission for some questions?
I don't think I have everything.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions for the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead and say.
Could you briefly run us through what you're going to do again, so I'll know?
Yeah. That was storage buildings and I want to do a retail store there as far as like sell the products. Like I want to have an office set up with that retail store. Then I want to do a manufacturing building, like so I can build my storage buildings inside.
Will be inside, what you need.
Yeah, yes.
What will your operating hours be?
Nine, well, seven to five.
Six days a week?
Yes.
All right, any other question for the applicant?
Is that, is that a new position in between the new, in between the other buildings or is it up there where they?
It is right there where the buildings are right now.
Right beside the first one?
So I'm in between Spring Hollow and Central Virginia Produce Auction.
Any other questions from the commissioners? All right, Mr. Kaufman, you can sit down. Appreciate you answering our questions.
Thank you.
We'll turn this over to the commission.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yet I haven't visited the property. I really would like to make a motion on this one that we send it.
Okay.
Positive recommendation.
Very good. Got a motion to approve and send this on to the board of supervisors, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Mr. Kaufman, that moves on forward to the board of supervisors, sir. Thank you. Nikki, that brings us to Mr. White.
Yes, sir. Mr. White's case is the 25 S U P 365 and he has the request for the Airbnb bed and breakfast with up to 40 attendees at some gatherings. Let me see if Mr. White is here. I did not see him.
Okay, thank you.
I know that he was a few minutes late at the last meeting, so, and he's traveling from a further distance. Maybe he'll be here. He did not indicate that he wouldn't be.
Okay, well, let me ask this. Do any of the commissioners have any questions they want to ask Mr. White in regard to his application for the bed and breakfast?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
You do? Okay. All right, we will drop him down to last and now we'll move to Indigo Acres.
So our case is 25 S U P 363. Our applicants are Indigo Acres. They have three tax maps, parcels that have, on which the request is being made, 16, parcel 21, just over 122 acres, tax map 16, parcel 35, just over 47 acres, and tax map 16, parcel 36, at 24.93. It's all located at or near 1048 Rock Island Road. Their request before you is what was introduced last month for the purpose of constructing and operating a retreat and wellness center, including but not limited to guest cottages, bathhouses and a lodge, and the operation of an event center to include but not limited to vendor markets, workshops, educational programs, farm tours, U-PIC, live music, wedding ceremonies, community gatherings. The event center request is to have up to 1,250 attendees, which was part of the discussion and decreased in size at the introduction last month, four monthly events at this capacity and up to 125 temporary campsites. Our applicants are here with us in this evening to address any questions and concerns.
Okay, at this time, how many people have signed up for public?
We have 21 signed up for the public hearing.
Okay, and I know you have a certain amount of emails you have to read.
I do. I have 40 emails, actually 41, because I've received another one since we were sitting here, that were sent to the planning commission and/or the chairman, vice chair, and to the zoning administrator. And I have seven others that were just sent to me as the zoning administrator and an additional email sent to everyone.
Okay.
So that would be 49.
All right, how, out of those, how many will you need to read? I know some of them were directed, the majority of them were directed at the planning commission as well.
Forty were addressed with the members of the planning commission and there's only seven that did not include the planning commission. Actually, I'm sorry, 42 that were sent.
Okay, so you need to read the other seven, correct? Is that right?
Yes. Do you want me to read the ones that were not copied to the planning commission?
They would be the ones that I would read, yeah. The others, I will say for the record, the majority of them were in support of the project. But we will, but before we do that, does any of the commissioners have any questions for the applicant prior to me opening up the public hearing?
I would have a question, but I'd like to hear the public first.
Okay, yeah, we'll have time after that. So, all right, we'll, I'll now open up the public hearing.
Like for the sign up, the signees, the individuals here?
Yes, let's do the people that are here and then when you'll read those emails that were, or requests it to be read, so.
This evening, our, the first individual signed up is going to be Kiera Smariga. She will be followed by Tina Terry.
Okay, if everybody would come forward, you know, state your full name and address, three minutes, and because we have so many, I'm going to have to hold it pretty tight to the three minutes.
Got you, awesome.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kiera Smariga. I live at 1048 Rock Island Road. I am one of the owners of Indigo Acres and the project that is coming up for public hearing tonight. I feel it is important that I make a brief statement. We've gotten wind that there might be some misunderstandings regarding our proposal, so I wanted to come up here and clarify a very few important factors for our project. As per the last meeting with the planning commission, we reduced all our numbers in half and tonight we are coming with a plan to reduce our numbers even more and set very specific boundaries and parameters about our project. We are reducing our numbers to six events per year at 750 attendance at no more than once per month, and we would also like to have 18 events per year at 325 maximum attendance. This would total 24 events per year. Additionally, we have reduced the size and capacity of our retreat center and camping for the events, which my husband will go into detail about later tonight. Lastly, anything that may be built has to be approved by the building department, the health department, and we are committed to working in tandem with them to ensure that anything constructed on our land is safe and sanitary. If that means we have to adjust our plan in order to make that happen, we are more than happy to do so. I will also add that per talking to V D O T, we have agreed to put a different entrance on Rock Island Road hundreds of feet from the curve to mitigate any kind of, you know, risk and danger that there may be. And this project will be built by our family and it will take many years to scale to the numbers presented tonight. From the few concerns that we have heard, we have adjusted our numbers because we are here to cultivate community and not create separation in it. This is our home where we are raising our small children. This is going to be a family-friendly and safe space. Our doors are open to anyone who has questions or concerns and we take them very seriously, as I hope is evident in us reducing our numbers. Thank you for your time and consideration. I also printed out what we're asking for tonight and I'd like to pass it out to each of you, so you have a physical copy, because it's kind of a lot. And I also have any for any of you guys who might want one, I printed a bunch of copies. Is it okay if I pass that out?
Yes, absolutely.
Go ahead, just to speed things up. Hello, my name is Tina Terry and I'm from Washington State. I'm considering moving here to be closer to my daughter Kara. I wanted to voice my support of this project. I personally love to attend events like this that my daughter's family is proposing and I've been to many sort of retreat and educational centers like this many times. No matter where I am, these type of spaces draw beautiful, devoted and safe communities No matter where I am, these type of spaces draw beautiful, devoted, and safe community of people. The surrounding areas truly benefit from these types of events. It's growing community, bringing economic benefits. I think that this is going to be a, actually, I think it's going to cultivate and beautify this area. And I would love to see this area enhance its beauty and appeal, and I urge the planning commission to support my daughter and her family's dreams. This can really cultivate, I think, an economic benefit, but also beautify, so, thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have James Wood Jr. and Regina Eppard.
I've never been up here, my name is James A. Wood Jr., lifelong resident, Buckingham County. I heard about the special permit, and I am definitely set against it. Not against their open dream, just that it's in the wrong location. They have better suited places for what they're trying to achieve, but not in a rural setting of a community that we have. Right on down to the traffic that is going to compose on that part of the highway. The lay of the land, I was a steward of that land for many years, keeping it up, I hunted it. It's got four known grave sites on it, three that are just slate markers. And there again, there was only one marked on their plan. The runoff, the water situation, they have creeks going through there. There's quite a bit of situations of where what they're proposing does not work for that property. I've seen a lot of things that they're due, I've sit back and watched, and they struggle at best just to keep a few sheep in there. And now they're trying to talk about putting, or proposed permit, twenty-five hundred people for a venue. And there again, they speak on open fires and campsites. When there again, they set their own trash on fire, and it got out, and they couldn't control that. It is definitely concerns when I own the farm straight across the road with hay buildings, and I have my own cattle with two houses. That's not the area that this needs to be, I feel. Right on down to, I don't see how zoning a place like this in a rural community helpful to any one of the community members. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I had.
All the petitions, get, hand those to Ms. Adamson here, please.
Thank you, sir. Regina Eppard and James Wood III.
Hello, I'm Regina Eppard, I've been a Buckingham County resident for fourteen and a half years now. One reason that I came here is because obviously it's a nice quiet area. And obviously, we have a farm that is directly across from them. And basically, we have a lot of high concerns for a lot of everything, between the road maintenance and things that's going to come along with the high traffic. We also have concerns as far as contamination with, they're, they're ranging from the sewage and water ideas, and all the way down to even just the general trash and stuff. It already finds its way to our road as it is anyways. We obviously don't need that increased. As well as the noise ordinance and everything, obviously, it is a very quiet area. That's the reason why a lot of people like it, and it has been that way, obviously, for quite some time. We already find that our county is a very beautiful place, and we find that it already has enough heritage and culture and everything in it, sometimes you just gotta look a little harder for it. And, uh, no, not necessarily quite the place, in my opinion, for this kind of scale of things. Especially when there are other businesses and other people around the county that attend the farmers' markets, and they also set up their own places that are, there again, close to farmers' markets and different such places like that, that they are able to share and provide some of their own products, things that they make themselves, yada, yada. Obviously, it being a farm area, a royal area and everything, we do have a lot of different concerns and stuff when it comes not only to just the property values, our tax appraisals, everything, all this stuff we can see increasing. And so, obviously, not that good when you're trying to have a farm and raise a family. We want our grandkids and stuff to grow up there, we want them to be able to have the same quietness, to grow up to the same way that our kids have and all, and just basically, I, I don't mind that they have their dreams and that they have these things that they want to do. I just find that the place that they're wanting to do it at is not quite suited for what they're asking. So, there's a whole lot that can be said. We have another friend that wasn't able to be here tonight, and my son will be taking him reading, apart from what he has also pointed out and feels that concerns need to be addressed. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's been a question from the floor, from Mr. Wood. An individual on the sign-up sheet, May Wood, did not want to speak, and she wanted to give her three minutes, we have not.
Yeah, we talked earlier, and it's fine, as long.
You're gonna let him have six minutes?
I'm sorry.
You're gonna let him have six minutes? We just sort of have to know, just set the timer.
Well, he's only, this is for a time of speaking, right?
Yes.
This is my first time speaking, and May Wood would like to cede her time to me.
Yeah, just three minutes, I mean, she's not speaking, but you're taking her place, correct?
So, he'll speak.
I'm signed up.
Yes.
And she is signed up.
Means he'll speak now, and then later, um.
Well, right, if, if, yes. Do you have something different to say, the, the second time around?
I have a lengthy.
Okay, alright, so you're asking for six minutes at this time? Okay.
If at all possible.
Alright, I'll, I'll grant that, and go ahead.
My name is James Wood III. I live at twelve eighty-three Rock Island Road, directly across from Indigo Farms. I am speaking upon the recommendations of a land surveyor, who is unable to be here today. The recommendations would be a full traffic study and limit events to existing conditions or a developer fund to improvements to meet or exceed the max event load. Rock Island Road and White Rock Road are designated as local roads and based on standard designations. There's a lack of shoulders, there's a lack of striping, there's lower speed limits, and general custom usage. They're very agricultural areas, there's farm equipment going up and down these roads. These are not highways or arterial roads. As a local road designation is usually expected to handle four hundred vehicles a day max. Upgrades to minor collector designation would increase to a two thousand vehicle max use if they, if these upgrades are put into.
Mr. Chairman, can I get you to speak just a bit?
Yeah, I'll say.
I can step over here.
Yeah, mine need pulled up a little bit, if it'll stay up there for me.
There you go.
Here we go. The intent to use compostable toilets and porta-johns is an environmental and health concern. Compostable toilets pose the following risks. The handling of human waste is inherently dangerous and should only be done by qualified and trained personnel. The risk of contamination is high. If not properly composted and managed, it will produce odors. Composting that amount of human waste has a real risk to groundwater contamination. I live next door and I'm on a shallow water well, and that is a very high concern to myself and I'm sure very many neighbors. high maintenance requirements, who will inspect and be responsible for oversight and records and testing of these septic tanks? Septic volume for music events and camping, camping are understood to be seventy gallons per person per day, generated with a hundred and forty gallons per person per day water use requirement. It is believed that the volume to be produced will exceed the ability of the developer to safely manage. It is requested that an in-depth study and recommendations be provided by a specialist in wastewater management. Water uses was not addressed last month. However, the personal needs of seventy to one hundred and forty gallons per day for events is typically per person. Family usage of a hundred and fifty gallons per day per bedroom, plus assumed irrigation for farm use, will require a substantial system. Will this be from wells, or will this be trucked in to be on site? What will be the inspection and oversight for water quality of the composted human waste? Will that be on site, or will that have to be trucked off-site? Require environmental impact study? The septic, the water usage, the water runoff that will be generated by this proposal will have an impact on the local environment. It is requested that a study be performed and recommendations of procedures and oversight be provided by a professional environmentalist. Like my father stated, it is a very steep, very hilly parcel. I myself hunted it for a few years as well, and with many creeks and many hills, this is a big concern. Security recommendations, is usually recommended that one security person per fifty to a hundred people is standard. Some of this can be volunteered, but we're in a very rural area. The police response is not always the fastest. Paramedics is typically recommended that one trained paramedic per thousand people on site, plus support staff. Same thing with the paramedics, it is not a fast response time. We are on the very back end of the county, we're almost in Scottsville. And the response times of these important services are not adequate for the location and size of these proposals. The campsites, will they have fire pits? Will they be community fire pits? Assuming a hundred and twenty-five campsites and two community fire pits for discussion, that is a hundred and twenty-seven open fires. The fire department's response time is in the same manner as every other emergency service, and would not be adequate, I feel like, for this type of proposal. I would like to see a very small version of this come to be, but not this, it is not the location for this size of a proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it, huh?
By Richard Rose.
My name is Richard Rose, and I have a home directly across from the property purchased by Indigo Acres. My address is eleven eighty-nine Rock Island Road, and I have a strong opposition to this project at this time. First, I want to address a claim made by the applicant that nearby residents were spoken to and were supportive. That simply was not true. No one from this LLC has contacted my household or several of my neighbors, including those directly across the property, prior to the proposal on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. To claim community support without ever meeting the community raises serious concerns about transparency. Second, the timing of the land purchase and the formation of the LLC strongly suggests that the intention was commercial use from the start, not agricultural or residential. Third, despite owning the property for about a year, the applicant has not presented any plans to neighbors or provided any details of how they intend to mitigate predictable concerns such as wastewater, septic load, aquifer impact, trash management, traffic control, emergency access, noise levels, lighting, or late-night activity. None of these issues were addressed. Fourth, noise will be a major disruption, concerts, workshops, crowds of up to twelve hundred people, and one hundred and twenty-five tent sites will generate constant activity. Noise does not stop instantly at eleven P M. People linger, socialize, and move around afterward. We have an elderly couple living across directly from this property, forcing concert-level noise into their home repeatedly is deeply unfair and potentially harmful to their health and well-being. Rock Island Road is a narrow, quiet residential road, this property is more than a mile from the main route. Traffic from hundreds of cars will cause backups, block driveways, and create serious safety hazards. Adding a high-volume traffic event, especially with the likelihood of attendees bringing alcohol or marijuana, significantly increases the risk of impaired driving and accidents. The applicant has provided no security plan, no emergency medical plan, no crowd management strategy, no parking overflow plan, and no explanation of how quiet hours would be enforced. For an event site that could host twelve hundred visitors, these omissions are not minor, they are fundamental safety failures. There has also been no environmental impact discussion. A project of this sale, of this scale could impact groundwater resources, affect wells, harm wildlife, and produce significant waste. None of this has been evaluated. I ask you to consider this not as just officials, but as fellow residents. If a commercial venue with concert tents, crowds were placed directly across from your home on a small country road, would you feel your peace, safety, and way of life were being protected? That is the position we are in. Finally, if the committee does approve this, despite the serious concerns, I respectfully request a separate dedicated meeting to establish clear, clear conditions. These must include limits on noise, capacity, quiet hours, security requirements, emergency access, parking control, lighting restrictions, environmental protections, protections for vulnerable neighbors. Approving this permit without those conditions thoroughly defined would be a premature and unsafe.
Thank you.
Richard Rose, followed by Peggy Rose.
My name is Richard Rose, I live at eleven twenty-three Rock Island Road, which is directly across from William's property and everything. William and his family are very nice people and everything, but with what they're planning to do, I'm not supporting it. I spent twenty-seven years, or twenty-four years in the military. We moved down here twenty-seven years ago for peace and quiet and looking up at the stars, and just being quiet and peaceful for everybody. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors or anybody around that area to have to listen to music up until eleven o'clock at night. There's probably going to be alcohol, which means problems. You got a bunch of tents, people living in them, they're gonna be moving around, crossing the roads, coming onto my property, I don't want that. I don't know, I hope the board here really considers this hard of how it's going to affect the families that live around there. Thank you very much.
Peggy Rose, followed by Patrick Dunphy. I've just been informed that this gentleman will be speaking for Peggy Rose.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Patrick Dunphy. I live across the road in eleven twenty-three Rock Island Road. I'm speaking on behalf of Peggy Rose. As this will have such a large impact upon our rural community, I'd like to tell you some of the problems that we foresee for them. Although it's been stated in the application that there's only going to be about twelve hundred and fifty people there, think of how much noise pollution that this many people can make and that there could be many more even attending because after all, who's going to be counting exactly this many people? Who is going to be there as guards or other such, security, to make sure no one is going to be bringing in anything that shouldn't be there? Guns, drugs, what have you? Which could lead to a very high crime rate within the community, which will make our property value plummet near worthless. With so many people and what is to say that they'll even remain on the designated campground property and will not intrude upon the neighboring properties? Once the visitors begin drinking the alcohol that could be sold there that has been applied for, though they even bring it in themselves, they can sneak it in. Who is to say that perhaps brawls won't break out and maybe perhaps guns that may have been brought in might be brought out and used? So much can happen when you're talking about so many people and events of this proportion. Also, our little narrow county road is not equipped to handle the amount of traffic and their large entrance is just in that curve where there has been a great deal of accidents already, which has been spoken on. If we allow this business to be admitted into the community, others will follow. And it can be expected that the property will be even rezoned for more business, which will make taxes much higher on our properties. Although our family's water supply may also be safe due to a two-hundred-foot-deep well, the amount of water used by this many people will make a huge difference in the water supply of many of our own neighbors. Some of the neighboring wells, as I understand it, are a little over fifty feet deep and could not withstand that much draw on the water that will feed their wells. And how could many even afford to or would want to spend over five thousand dollars to put in new wells deep enough for them to be able to get a good supply of water again? They plan on having porta-potties as well as a number of other bathhouses and we know the foul smells that accompanies porta-johns. The events and concerts that are planned, I can imagine can bring flies and other undesirable pests in. The smell of food and et cetera could attract bears, wolves, which could threaten our own livestock and prove just as handy for those predators' meals. They want open fire pits and if a fire were to start over there, they would have woods and we all have woods and dry grass upon our properties. In case of fire with all the visitors crowding those roads, we would have nowhere to get out because the property fronts on both ends. We of this community have lived here for years and value our privacy and well-being of ourselves and of our neighbors. I do not believe that most of us would want to welcome the constant noise and traffic onto our peaceful way of life. Thank you.
My cue, sir.
Mr. Dunphy, you said you were going to speak for Peggy Rose. Are you going to keep your slot or you're done?
No, he's done.
Okay, thank you, sir. Swami Nityananda will be followed by Judith Evangelus.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the concerns that have been spoken here tonight and as a rural person, shared many of them. On the other hand, I've developed six different projects here in Australia from sixty-five acres to over five thousand involving many hearings. I was sent here by Swami Satchidananda in September of seventy-nine and heard many, if not exactly the same complaints. Now, I ask any of the neighbors that live down there what they feel about it now, after forty years, forty-five years. Getting older. Woodland Church expressed great concerns. It's in the center of that community. People can speak for themselves, but the property values have gone up to the point they're obscene. The value of the land because of this development has gone up so many times that it's I couldn't afford it if I wasn't a monk, anyway. What I would recommend for all concerned is a book called Rural by Design: Maintaining Small Town Character by Randall Arntz. American Planners Association talks about smart development, as it is sometimes called, which exemplifies the connection of ecological sensitivity to community feelings. I think that's a good place to start for people to really find what is feasible, what has been done, how the Conservation Department has answered most of these questions down on the James River, which is the most ecologically sensitive place you could possibly imagine. So for sanitation, sewage, water, shallowness of wells, I think these are all valid issues. I think they need to be addressed and answered to the point where Buckingham County exemplifies smart development, ecological sustainability, and yes, comity with your neighbors. The people that have lived there for generations sometimes. They all have to feel that they're playing a role and a part in this, not separate from the beginning, but working together from the beginning. So I think with that, I'll available any questions from anybody, but my time is up.
Can I get your name again?
Swami, S-W-A-M-I. I'll spell it for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Judith Evangelus, followed by Betty Jean Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you for hosting the hearing and the service that you all do. I have little to add. I live in the Yogaville District, District Five, and you may remember my face because we were here a few months ago with special use permit in order to develop something for gatherings and healthy community and family-oriented activities. And knowing the, not very long that I know this family that moved to the community, I just want to say that my my role in the community is serving in the capacity as psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner, which means that for decades, my role is really evaluating the character of people and getting a good eye to who and what they are and what they represent. And so while there are legitimate concerns that need to be followed up and resolved here, I just wanted to say that what I know of Cara and William and the family-oriented life that they're maintaining and proposing to share with larger groups of people, I believe they have the character to follow through on what they're asked to do, amendments that they're asked to make, and the contributions they want to make to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Betty Jean Anderson, followed by Christopher Eric Anderson.
Good evening. My name is Betty Jean Anderson. My address is fifteen sixty-nine Rock Island Road. I am a neighbor. I'm here in support of Indigo Acres. I'm here in support of Indigo Acres.
You can pull that down. Yeah, there you go.
I believe that we're at a time where we're going to see change in our area. And we need to be open to this idea of change because change is inevitable. Would we rather see big developments in our neighborhoods? And if we're talking about draws on, you know, resources in the area, we have to take all those things into consideration too. But change is inevitable and it's coming. And I can appreciate some of the neighbors and what their concerns are. But I'm here in support because I think this is an opportunity for growth in our community. I think this is an opportunity for revenue within our area. We also have a winery that's down the road. I think that they could benefit. I just think as neighbors, we need to be open and accommodating to people that want to bring about good growth and change within the community. And for that, I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Christopher Eric Anderson, followed by Kenneth Carl Alberts.
Hello. Good evening to everybody. I appreciate everybody being here this evening, whether for or against this. I'm Chris Anderson. I live at one five six seven Rock Island Road, which is a couple driveways down from William and Care's. I'm here in support of this. There's always a need for change in community. I know this part of the area of Buckingham is definitely growing. I've been here thirty years and watched the change, just as most people in this room has. Some of my credentials are what I do for a living. I'm a commercial developer and commercial builder. I don't desire to have commercial development around, so I'm in support of this because I think it's something that would be good for the community. I'm very experienced in building roads, state highways. I'm licensed by the State of Virginia. We build them all the time. And I'm also a master alternative septic installer and we deal with a lot of the treatment that is needed on a project like this. Or your conventional septic at your regular home. I think that some of the things that everybody here is really pushing hard on is making sure things are regulated. And my experience as a builder for twenty-three years and septic installer is that there's programs that are put into place in the building department and the zoning departments that regulate how things are going to happen and for how many ever people for occupancy. So I have nothing but confidence in the State of Virginia, Buckingham, and any other counties I've ever worked in to make sure things are regulated properly. And I'm confident that William and Care are going to follow whatever's set. And this goes for VDOT as well. I think this is a prime location. They do have road fronters on two highways. And again, you can always digest traffic in two different directions if you needed to. I suggested this to William when we first talked. If it's too big of an event, you can put a separate entrance in and you can have them go in both directions. So there is no traffic problems. There's always going to be a need for people to be there to help try and, you know, digest the traffic. There's always going to be a need for security. I'm pretty sure there could be plans put into place to help with all these things. The same as the county would require them to put in this type of septic system. I'm not for the compost toilets. I think they definitely can get messy. There's a lot of different alternative systems out there to help with this, so you can treat the water before it even hits the ground. And they put them in every day. So I'm just here to say that I think everybody here needs to really let the people that are in charge, that makes the decisions at the building department, the zoning departments, and the health departments, including VDOT, let them regulate this. This is what they do and they're the experts. They know better than most people in this room. That's all I have to say. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Kenneth Carl Alberts, followed by Elaine Crable.
Good evening. I'm Kenny Alberts. I have a property directly across the road at twelve fifty-seven Rock Island. I see no problems. Most of the stuff has been addressed that I was going to say, so I see no problems with it. I'm here to I think that what they're doing is going to be great. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, my cue, sir.
Elaine Crable and next will be Florence Perkins.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Crable. I'm at nine one six White Rock Road. I am definitely not in support of this. One being, it doesn't seem like they have a real clear plan in this. You're going from twenty-five hundred numbers to twelve fifty numbers. Now you're reducing it to three hundred-plus numbers. I feel like they keep reducing the numbers in order to get this passed. Twenty-one folks have signed the petition versus forty emails, as was stated for this. But I do have a major concern about the traffic. I'm a newcomer to Buckingham County. I moved here for the surrealness and the peacefulness from a major, large city of Kansas City to Buckingham. I feel like the studies have not been addressed as far as whether they're environmental, traffic. The zoning is clearly agricultural. Therefore, the zoning committee needs to get involved in this as well. They stated that they had the community's support, that they talked to their neighbors. Not one person has come to my door asking me what my opinion of it is, what the plans were being established. So I don't appreciate being involved in that they have talked to the community for some support. We are not in Australia. Therefore, reading a book about rural community things is not out of the question, but I don't support that analogy as well because we are not Australia. They have different resources than Buckingham County does. As far as security, I don't want my grandchildren being exposed to this plan. Road narrowness, the VDOT definitely needs to be addressed. I mean, I travel the White Rock as well as Rock Island every day. And I get run off the road on White Rock as well as Rock Island. So whether or not you have two separate entrances, you're still going to have that issue. I feel like all the studies need to be completed before any decisions are to be made. And I strongly feel like this petition needs to be tabled until these studies are completed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Florence Perkins and next will be David Ayers Jr.
Hello. My name is Florence Perkins. I live at thirty-five fourteen Rock Island Road. I am, I vote in the fifth district area. And no one has been in my part of the neighborhood to say welcome or to communicate with us about anything. I'm very concerned with the number of cars and people, which will be strangers from Florida, New York, and other various places that will be coming into our neighborhood. And the other thing is they're not familiar with our living, the roads, they're not familiar with none of our living arrangements. And also, they want to have live music and they ask for liquor permit. And they're saying eleven o'clock audience, but I can see now, young people, when they say eleven o'clock, they say the party just gets started and they're going to jam on. So I mean, you know, it's something that we don't need, especially me because I'm an old lady. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
David Ayers and then next we will have Diane Ayers.
Good evening. Thanks for having me up here. I want you all to understand, everything that you've heard that was going negative against this proposal, would you say turn them to Mike? Because it's for real. I agree with the negativity of this proposal a hundred and ten percent. I grew up on White Rock Road. I remember when it was a dirt road. So it's right in proper places for proper things. I appreciate people being entrepreneurs, but it's just not the right spot. Other than my sister, my mother was getting killed in that curve. It's just a Rock Island and White Rock. They're just dangerous roads, period. I've been here a long time. I grew up on there. There were dirt roads. Golf town and all up through that. I worked at Luther Baber's store up in Centenary. I know these places. I know the people. People used to drive horses and wagons up to Centenary. That's just not the place for this type of venue, I have to say. Other than that, there's several grave sites on that property that the owners don't know about. I'm like Mr. Woods in the sun. I cut wood back there. I hunted back there. I know the property. My main concern is, what revenue is it going to bring to White Rock Road and Buckingham County and Rockfish? What's the benefit for us? Is it, what revenue is going to come into our pockets for the neighborhood? They're going to repair the roads? Do the digits put lines on the roads? What? That's about all I got to say, because my butt pressure is getting kind of high. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next we have Diane Ayers, and then Marion Rose Alberts.
Good afternoon. My name is Diane Ayers, and I live on Rock Island Road. And I've been a resident there all of my life. And I'm concerned also with the traffic, security, and like some medical assistance if we need it. Because like the young man said, it takes a while for the rescue squad, the police. I'm concerned with all of that. And like you're saying, it's just, there's too many people. So pretty much everything been summed up with my fellow neighbors and everyone. Because like I said, I've been a resident for all my life, my grandparents. And like I said, I don't have anything against them, but it's just that it's too many people, and I'm really concerned about the security. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Marion Rose Alberts, Morgan Hopkins. Speak after Ms. Alberts.
Hello. I have owned now, my husband and I, across the road from William and Kara now, since May of 2021. We have dual residency, Goochlin and Buckingham. And we have come out here for peace and quiet and nature as well, as others have said. But upon meeting and getting to know William and Kara, I am in support of their project and their dream. And they want to do the right thing, they want to build community. And as long as they go through the proper avenues and the permitting through the county and are safe. Composting toilets is probably not the greatest thing or idea. They get it done right. And I think that that's going to be the right thing to do. As far as the fires, I'm sure there's going to be stipulations on that. As far as the eleven o'clock at night, I'm sure that the county may approve something a little bit earlier for the neighbors' concerns, obviously, for the noise. I believe if I were to buy a hundred and ninety-five acres and I had a dream like theirs, I would hope that I would have support by the neighbors and the community and the county, along with stipulations, of course. So I'm in support, obviously. Everyone's pretty much touched on the positive things and the negative things. And I just want to see their dream come true, and I think building community is a positive thing. I come from Goochlin County, and it's a growing county as well. And it builds revenue, you know, this sort of project is going to build revenue, just as if they were mentioning earlier. It's going to be good for the county, it's going to be good for the neighbors and community, it's going to be good for, say, Muddy Paws Winery that's been approved, just a mile up the road from us, on the same road. There doesn't seem to be a concern with the alcohol at Muddy Paws and their events and things like that. So they, I'm sure, have stipulations and rules that they have to follow. We all have rules that we have to follow. So I do feel like it's something that everyone should consider. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Morgan Hopkins, Jason Maxwell.
Hi, I'm Morgan. My great-grandfather bought land on four thirty-five Georgia Creek Road, when it was a dirt road. And I've seen the changes of Buckingham. In regards to traffic and people's concerns, I've had worse problems with James River runners on White Rock Road than anything. But with Kira and William's dream, I have children. I believe in clean air and clean water. And I believe the revenue that they want to produce is far more, more richer than money. It's skills, primitive skills, and making soap and pottery, things that my children would benefit from. So I think I'm very in support of this dream they have because of that. Because also being in Buckingham, there's not a lot to do for people unless you are hunting and you are mushroom hunting and you're looking at the river and swimming. For young people, I think this would be a great opportunity to gain skills. Because it would be further like with, I'm sure they would get into milling and wood and making things that would, you know, benefit children. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Maxwell, then we had May Wood who deferred to James Wood. Haley Wood will be next.
Good evening, Jason Maxwell, ten twelve Rock Island Road. I am their next-door neighbor, literally right next door. I shared their sheep, I helped him fix and build defenses. I walked the property and we've talked many, many times on, on how we can make this work and how, how the community feels about it. My landlord's are older, he's a veteran, Vietnam veteran. He has no problem with this. I'm speaking on behalf of them to get their approval. The land is fantastic, and I didn't feel there's a threat. I drove these roads all the time. You know, you've got to be an idiot to wreck on these roads. Just drive sensibly, you know? And the whole drinking thing, the whole marijuana thing, you can go anywhere in the county and find that. Upon one fifty-one corridor, there was that all the time. I mean, that's not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that as an issue, but I'm in great support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Haley Wood, and our last speaker will be Nicholas Kolsniak.
Ready? I'm glad to hear we're joking about drugs and alcohol and all these people that have been talking about their family members getting into accidents must all be imbeciles. So sorry, they're stupid, I guess. First of all, I work at Muddy Paws Winery. Their maximum events have about fifty people, and they don't over-serve. There is no way to sneak alcohol in there because most of the time, they had about five people in their tasting room. And there's cameras everywhere. So are they going to put cameras all over their lots? If their concerts are all outside, how are you going to check to make sure these drugs and alcohol aren't brought in? I live right across the road. My name's Haley Wood, I'm at twelve eighty-three Rock Island Road. My husband, James Wood III, spoke earlier. You know, when William and Kara first moved in, you know, they came, they told us they wanted to raise their family on their land and do homesteading and really build a beautiful place for their family. And we really respected that. And we were to have dinner with them, and then we found out the weekend before that dinner that they had already set this project into place and they never told us about it. We felt quite blindsided because we thought we had a really good relationship with them, and we heard nothing. Traffic, she mentioned runners. Runners on White Rock can get hit. Deer get hit all the time on White Rock. It's not well-lit, there's no lines. Our fence gets hit at least once a year, and we have the largest stop sign that the state of Virginia can provide. The size capacity at seven fifty is still too much. You know, seven hundred and fifty people at a concert isn't a guy on stage with a guitar. That's speakers and lights and alcohol. And they bring in a lot of the influencer type, the young kids who drink and get drunk and see our cows across the road and think, oh my God, it's a cute cow, let's go pet it. They want open fires. Are they going to have a person maintaining each of these fires? Who is going to be watching these? Who is going to be surveilling this? See. You know, there's the health concerns, they're going to have swamis on the property, are they going to have any paramedics? How are they going to deal with a mass casualty event if something happens? I'm out of time, but, thank you.
And Nicholas Kolsniak.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicholas Kolsniak. I'm at twenty Forest Ridge Lane, and I'm here in support of the project for William and Kara. I've got to know their family very well over the last year and a half, and they're just a beautiful family. And they attract very beautiful people into their lives. And so we're happy to be part of those beautiful people who are in there. And, you know, I have two young kids ourselves, and we hang out with them all the time. And what they're looking to attract are families, they're looking to attract people who are looking to better their lives. And so why wouldn't we want that in our community? So I'm very much in support of that. I know that they're hearing a lot of concerns tonight, and they even came here tonight and addressed a lot of the concerns they heard even before we had this public hearing. I know that they're going to take these concerns that they're hearing from everybody tonight, and they're going to go back and they're going to revise whatever they need to do. But we want to make sure that their dreams are fulfilled, and I believe that, you know, they're going to consider the community in this whole thing and just make sure that, you know, they have a nice life set up for themselves, but also for the community. So I definitely encourage everybody to kind of continue the dialogue, ask them questions. But I think ultimately, this will be a great thing for the community. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
We don't have anyone else sign up for the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the, on a petition, you're saying? Okay. Nikki, you have some emails to read for the record?
Yes, sir. Let me just clarify, we are reading only the ones that did not get distributed to all of the commission members.
That's correct.
First one is from Jeremiah Nix. He states, hello, I'm writing this to inform you of my support for your consideration of the project at Indigo Acres. I believe it will be beneficial to the community and the region. Thank you for your time. Once again, all the best, Jeremiah Nix. Ms. Edmiston, the following letter is in support of the Indigo Acres project being proposed by Mr. and Mrs. Mariga. I have known Bill for over twenty years, and I have no doubt that he and his wife will become pillars of your community. I think the project will bring tourism and commerce to the area while preserving the integrity of the land and its rural charm. Please give them the opportunity to contribute to the social and economic development of your county. Sincerely, Joseph Frank, Airman, U.S. Navy. To whom it may concern in Buckingham, we want to express our support for the project at Indigo Acres. We believe it will be a huge asset to the community of Buckingham and surrounding area. All the best, Dwight and Julie Coral.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. May we have the address?
I don't have an ad, if I have an address, I'll give that. I'm not giving addresses if I don't have them, no.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is, I am from Tim Terry. I am supporting the Indigo Acres project, and I think it would be beneficial to the region. Architect, Tim Terry. Dear City Council, my name is Lacy Espinoza, and I live in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm writing to express my support for the proposal of Indigo Acres project. I love this area and would visit a whole lot more if there was something like the Indigo Acres project there. I would love to share this with many more people in my life, and I would love to support the region. I strongly believe this event and retreat center will bring a unique and much-needed amenity to the region and the world. The combination of a wedding and event venue, a nature-based getaway offers a peaceful, beautiful setting for celebrations, wellness, and community connection. Indigo Acres provides residents with a local option for hosting weddings, proms, reunions, and retreats without leaving the area. It also encourages visitors such as myself to experience your region's natural landscape in a respectful, well-managed environment. This project adds value to the community while preserving the quiet beauty of the surroundings. I believe Indigo Acres will be an asset to the region and strongly support its approval. Sincerely, Lacy Espinoza. The next one states, I support William and family's project at Indigo Acres. They are some smart cookies looking to improve people's lives while preserving the beauty of the land. I think it will be an economic benefit to the region. Having worked for a prior business of theirs and appreciating their attention to detail and generosity greatly, I look forward to them creating community in Virginia. Kevin McClintock. And he gives a phone number, eight oh five six nine eight four six seven two. And finally, I have, to whom it may concern, I, Jamie Miller, support the project on Indigo Farm under the supervision of William and Kira. Jamie Miller, one seventy Nighthawk Drive, Chester, Maryland, two one six one nine. Those are the emails. I think I have one more in my email that does not have the planning commission on it. This one states, hello, this is Maxwell Coral. I am writing to express my strong support for the project taking place at Indigo Acres. This initiative represents a meaningful opportunity to enhance our community in ways that are both lasting and far-reaching. The project's focus on improving local resources, creating inviting shared spaces and fostering community engagement will benefit residents of all ages. By investing in Indigo Acres, we are investing in a healthier, more connected, and more vibrant community. I believe this project will not only enrich the daily lives of current residents, but also strengthen our community's long-term growth and appeal. Your continued backing of this initiative will help ensure that these positive impacts become a reality. Thank you for your commitment to our community and for considering the importance of supporting the Indigo Acres project. Warm regards. Those are the emails that were only sent to.
Okay. With that conclusion, I'll now close the public hearing and turn it back over to the commission. The applicant would come on up to the podium, please.
Good evening.
I'll give you just a minute or two to, you know, answer some of the concerns that your constituents have or your neighbors have.
Thank you.
And then we'll, I'll open it up for the commission to ask questions.
I think the first thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to ask the planning commission to disregard the petition because it mis-
Can you pull the mic up?
Sure.
Hard to hear.
I would like to ask the planning commission to disregard the petition because it misrepresents the numbers of our project. It was created after our last meeting, and the numbers have been changed since then, and therefore, it's not accurate. Also, a lot of the numbers that were spoken by Alex were based on a twenty-five hundred number, which is not what we're aiming for anymore. We're down to about a quarter of that. So I think I'd like you all to consider that we're trying to really work with the numbers to make it a safe and meaningful experience. As my beautiful wife Kara mentioned already, we've listened closely to the concerns of our neighbors and taken guidance from county staff. In doing so, we've reduced the number significantly and refined our plan to be as low-impact and community-oriented as possible. Our primary goal is simple. We want to create a peaceful place where we can work together as a family, where we can be involved in raising our children with strong values and work ethic. And we can offer meaningful experiences to the community. Our proposal includes two complementary uses, a year-round retreat center and an event space. For the retreat center, we're requesting a reduced number of guest cottages to a maximum of twelve and a maximum forty guests at any time, which is also a pretty big reduction from what we were asking before. We'd like to use the ability, have the ability to use tents only as needed within that same capacity. And we're also reducing the size of the main lodge to three thousand square feet or less. We would also offer bathhouses meeting Department of Health standards, which will each include a toilet, sink, and shower. And if those don't, if a septic is a problem, or if it's going to cause any kind of environmental problems, we're happy to reduce or change that to something that is, that is more acceptable. These retreats will remain quiet and restorative and small. They'll be fully compatible with the rural character of our area and our goal of providing meaningful experiences tied to the land. The event space will be reduced significantly as well from our previous meeting. With large events having no more than seven hundred and fifty attendees and being held only once per month at a maximum of six times per year, smaller gatherings will hold up to three hundred and twenty-five guests up to eighteen times per year. For these events, we'd like to have a three-day max for the larger events and two-day max for the smaller events, and up to a hundred tent sites for overnight stays to reduce late-night driving and improve safety. Also, for the late-night things, campfires will be for retreats and events only, and they will be closely monitored and only in designated areas. I would also like to make it clear that any attendance capacities and frequencies refer only to commercial or public events under the scope of this SUP. These numbers do not apply to private gatherings from our family or operations such as U-PIC workshops or farm tours. Throughout the process, we've tried to make the- Throughout the process, we've tried to make decisions that reflect our commitment to being good neighbors, will maintain a low-impact operation, protect the rural nature of the community, and take careful measures with sound lighting and thoughtful scheduling. We want our land and neighborhood to remain clean, safe, and well-cared-for, and we'll continue listening to concerns and making adjustments as needed. We're raising our children here. We want this to be a safe environment. This retreat and event center is not just a business to us. It's a way for our family to stay together, to steward our land responsibly, to raise our children with the values of hard work, service, and community. We truly hope the Planning Commission and our neighbors can see the intention behind our proposal, the reductions we've made, and our long-term commitment to being respectful, responsible members of the community. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, yes, go ahead, Pete.
Yes, sir.
I hear that you had a business before, and one of these individuals who worked for you is now supporting your project. Did you have a business before?
I did. I had a soap company in California, in Santa Barbara.
How big was it?
It was basically me. I hired a couple guys on the side to help me with a couple of the events that we were running. We'd do small stands on State Street and on the beach in downtown Santa Barbara.
How many people did you entertain in your particular business?
By entertain, you mean serve?
Yeah.
Quite a number. I mean, the beach show that we had, I would serve up to a thousand, two thousand people per day in Santa Barbara on the beach. Look up the Santa Barbara Beach Show. It's a really popular show.
And that was your particular show?
No, that was not my particular show. There was probably about a hundred and fifty other vendors who were part of that show as well.
So, somebody organized it. You were a stand there and then-
Correct. It was a vendor, yes.
Okay, you were a vendor. Okay. And that was the business that this individual was-
Yes, sir.
Was that individual, is that a local person, or is that somebody from California?
No, he's from California, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Other questions for the commissioners?
Yeah, you were talking about the number of people that you changed. It was like, I forgot what the other number was, but now you're back down to twelve fifty?
No, sir. We're down to seven fifty. At last meeting, we had gone down to twelve fifty, and after hearing some of the complaints from our neighbors, we decided we'd like to lower that and make it, you know. We want it to be a happy space for everyone. We don't want everyone to think that it's too big. It's, you know, I've been to a big festival like Bonnaroo, where there's a hundred thousand people, on small roads like White Rock and Rock Island, and, you know, they maintain those roads fine. And we're not talking about anything like that. We're not a Woodstock. We're trying to make it a peaceful family setting, you know. That's the goal.
And your tents, you're going down to a hundred?
Yes, sir.
So, now the third thing I've got, I don't know what all you don't come up with, but on your VDOT, the road, it's, you know, it's got a no on here. It doesn't approve it.
It does not approve the current driveway, and they have approved a potential site about five hundred feet, if you're going out of our driveway to the right, and it meets all the VDOT requirements. And like we spoke with some of our other neighbors that, you know, had concerns about the traffic, if it's necessary, we're happy to put a second exit if we do need that, because we have the space for it, and we could actually go on two separate roads where it'll disperse the traffic a little bit more easily.
The thing, the second exit is Route Twenty. You'd have to go all the way up, and that's kind of way off.
No, sir, the-
That's what's on his list.
Okay, okay. Yes, that's, I'm saying there's a way we can put a new entrance on White Rock Road as well. That's-
Yeah, I like, I think that'd be good.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Yes, Pete?
I have several questions. First is the road concern. What I'm hearing from all the area, from the residents and the, with the road conditions, that is a very small road, and I'm up and down that road every day. And you can't hardly do anything without running out of the road. You're going to get run out of the road. And if they would widen these roads and make it suitable for you to have things there, I wouldn't see a problem. That's one of my complaints. The other one is the gray water from the, all what you have in there, it's, they call it gray water. And it, that's going to dump right into Georgia Creek. From where you, from where you are, it's going to go right down into the Georgia Creek Basin, and that flows right to James River. And that's another concern I have. The runoff. Fires is another thing that I'm worried about. I think that the campfires and have people camping there, it's going to be a problem. You're going to have a problem with getting fire departments down there. We had a fire right up the road tonight. When I was coming up here, the guy burning leaves on the side of the road, and they had the fire department was there when I came up to this meeting tonight. So, that's another concern I have. Another one is electrical power. What, how are you going to, how are you going to run electrical power back through that?
Once, once we have the approval, we're happy to work with the power company to bring power in however is necessary.
I just really have concerns with health problems, with the health departments and things like this. You and I have discussed this. It's nothing new to you, but I have a problem with that, with the runoff and the compost, whatever you call that, with the compost that you're going to be using. And the wells, yeah, I'm right down the road from you, and I don't want my well contaminated, if you can see my point, so.
I totally understand. And if there's, if there's a problem with composting toilets, we're happy to change that to a way that's more acceptable to the neighbors, because we are a hundred percent going for environmental consciousness. We don't want to bring in a bunch of wastewater to the James River. I actually, we have, where we're planning on putting our retreat center, it actually doesn't flow down towards the James River or the Rock Island.
Now, Georgia Creek originates right down below you there. I know that.
Correct, yeah. And we have land that flows in all different directions, so we're happy to make that work in a way that's environmentally stable.
I don't see how you can make it work. I mean, you can't make that work if it's not going, if it's going to run to Georgia Creek. I'm concerned because we've had solar farms go in, and it's a real problem from Georgia Creek down to the James River with the solar projects we've had. I'm just bringing it, all these points to you. And another thing, I noticed a lot of your people are from outer state, they're different places. Do you have connections in Buckingham County that would bring people in Buckingham County instead of California?
Oh, yes, of course. Yeah, we have lots of connections through Scottsville. We brought about ten or fifteen neighbors from Buckingham County with us. So, I think that shows a little bit of what we have to offer.
I just have very, a lot of concerns until, you know, if you want to get it off of ground, but I think we need to go back to ground zero and-
We've already also spoken with, we've- Yeah, we've already met with a OSE-certified soil engineer, and he said that it looks like our land is a great spot for doing what we're planning. And he said there was no issues that would contaminate any rivers, so I think-
Have you had any of it perked?
That's, that is an expensive thing, that we're going to wait until we have an approval to-
I had land perked right next to you, and it won't perk.
We have a hundred and ninety-five acres, sir. We're working on a big space that we can-
I'm just bringing it up.
Yeah, yes, Pete?
Yeah, let me ask a question about this one comment. Retreat center, year-round, small-scale, similar to a boutique hotel. Is that your three-thousand-foot center that you're talking about?
Yes, sir. Yes.
And you intend to have, it's going to be a hostelry? You're going to have somebody there staying? You're going to make rooms? There are going to be rooms there?
That was where we're going to have more of like a guest cottage, like a nature retreat center, where people can come for a maximum of seven days.
Okay, but that's not what I'm asking. With respect to this three-thousand-foot building, do you intend to, do you intend to have rooms in it? Will it be a hotel or a motel?
No, sir. That's not a lodge. That's just a lodge where we can have a yoga retreat or a wellness retreat.
So, it's a lodge hall?
Yeah, it's just a big, wide-open space.
All right, so this thing that says similar to a boutique hotel is that, I don't want that to be a part of the condition here.
You can, you can write that in there. That is not-
Wrench that off. Good. Okay. That's it. And I have other comments, but I don't know that he needs to stand here. I warn you.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. Nikki, is there a heading to that petition? What's on, is there a heading to that?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Gooden, this states, "Petition opposing Indigo Acres LLC, Kiara's Mariga Wellness Center, 1048 Rock Island Road, Scottsville, Virginia 24590." There is a petition statement. Would you like me to read that?
Do you want to read it?
Is it what the people are signing? What does the petition say? Go ahead.
The petition statement states, "This petition is to oppose the proposed special-use permit, case 25SUP 363, for 1048 Rock Island Road property in Buckingham County, Virginia. The owners of said properties have proposed to build a wellness center that will host events such as yoga, camping, concerts, markets, UPICs, workshop, weddings, et cetera, with as many as twenty-five hundred people for some of these events. This property is currently agricultural land and is surrounded by agricultural land. As a lifetime resident and landowner, James A. Wood, Jr., I feel that this will impact our community in a negative way. Some, but not limited to, concerns that I have. The traffic it may introduce to our small rural roads, property values, health concerns of how they will dispose of waste materials, safety concerns about having that number of people in one area could overwhelm our first responders and the amount of noise that will create in this quiet community. If you have the same concerns but are not limited to, please sign and voice your concerns at the public hearing on November 24th, 2025, at the Buckingham County Admin Office." And they give our address here. Please be there by 5:30 to sign up to be heard. Is your community too? Your concerns can be emailed to the planning board. And there are John Bigford, Pete Kabashinsky, and Joyce Gooden emails, names, addresses listed. That's it.
Okay, and how many signatures are on there?
They stated that there are ninety-one. I haven't-
You haven't counted them, though. Okay. And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
My other question. I have a concern about the number of people on this property and consistency with what we approve. And seven fifty is definitely more than what we've approved in the past for the number of acres relative to the number of acres, and I have a concern about that. So, I think the number of people will be reduced.
Yeah, the, you're exactly right. I think we've been at a low level and add on some of our latest applications.
Right, and, and just for consistency of what we're doing, so that we're equitable with the amount of acres they have and the amount of people that we are saying they can have for any activity. And I'm looking at in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty, not the seven fifty, but not allowed. There have been a couple.
Right.
But, when we started tracking, really tracking what we're doing and trying to be consistent with the acres, we have not allowed seven hundred and fifty people on the property for events.
The closest one that matches this is probably over on Alse Hill Road.
Right.
Right. Do you recall?
That's three hundred once a month. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, you know I have. It's three hundred once a month.
Right. I thought that's what the number we settled on.
Right. And then we've also limited seasonally activities. There have been winter activities and seasonal. So, if they're doing twelve, wait a minute, eighteen, twelve, eighteen-
Eighty-four.
Events, is that all compacted during the summer? What are there, events during the winter, outdoor events during the winter around here? With things iced over, that's my concern also. So, and so if you're squeezing a large number of events during the warmer months in Buckingham, that's going to impact the community too. So, I have a concern about that.
Do you want to address that, sir?
Sure. I, first, I'd like to ask, do you know how many acres that three hundred people was granted to?
Sure do. The three hundred, that person had, that was once a month, and that was seven acres.
Seven acres.
However, we had three hundred and seventy-five acres, and there were two hundred people allowed on that property. Three hundred and fifty acres, and it was only five, I'm sorry, only two hundred and fifty people allowed there. So.
Okay, so you're allowing three hundred people on seven acres? Is that what I understand?
That was that particular event, yes.
And in regards to the number of events throughout the summer, and I think we, we plan on spreading them out, so it's not every weekend during the summer. We could try to come up with some sort of an agreement where it's not overwhelming the community during a certain time period, because we do want to spread them out. We're not planning on having them every weekend, so if there's a way to make that clear.
The three hundred, and I just want to be clear, the three hundred once a month was the, I was on Waters, and I think that was the Yoga Bell event that we, if I'm correct about that. And then the, and so there's a, so we're trying to, again, be consistent with the number of people we allow on property.
So, I just did the math really quick, and if we did the same number of people per acre as you have on that project, we'd have eight thousand three hundred and fifty-seven people on our property once a month.
We've done the math before, okay.
Okay, I'm just stating that for the record.
We've done the math before. But if you're hearing what I'm saying, that we need to reduce the number of people that you're, we're going to allow, that I would be willing to allow on the property.
Do you have a number in mind that you're thinking? Because we want to support our family. We want to do this for the community, and you have to have a certain number of attendees to make it worth your time, to make it profitable. So, I really want to do this in a smart way.
And all of these people, all of these events that I'm looking at have, they do want to make it worth their while also.
Sure, absolutely.
But we significantly reduce the amount, the number of people that they, property. And the number would have to be the consensus of the board, because that's just my opinion. So, I need to hear what the consensus of the board is as far as reducing the number of people.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
I think if you recall the conversation we had on this last month, the initial offer, I mean, from the board, I mean, from the commission, we talked about a significantly lower number of people. You'd agreed to that. Also, we agreed, and you agreed, to have a curfew at ten o'clock, even though the ordinance says eleven o'clock. It was the commission that changed the number. And again, it's your project. Obviously, it's your design. We shouldn't be doing that for you. However, the comment that I would make that really concerns me about all of this, you're looking for, you're looking to create a major enterprise. Whether you think it is or not, it's a major enterprise.
Okay.
Normally, when there's this kind of a situation, and there are people who bring in the concerns that have been brought forward here, it seems to me that what's lacking are the answers, a plan. And you've heard that from some of the people here. There's a plan that should be in place. Because with regard to the concerns that were brought forward to you, you're automatically willing to change things. You'll say, "Well, I can work with that. Here's what I can do." Before we would turn this over to the board in a responsible manner, in my opinion, you'd have to have a plan. Tell me what you're going to do about the traffic. Tell me what you're going to do about the entrance and the exit to your property. Tell us what you're going to do about the composting, if there is going to be composting. Or are you going to use a septic? Because you had a neighbor that said he can do something. He doesn't believe in the composting situation that would be suitable for you. I mean, I think you need to come here with a plan, with a design. And normally, if you're talking about a major enterprise, the size of which you intend to grow to, it seems to me that if you had a community of people that you wanted to convince that this thing would be beneficial to them, you'd have a community meeting, and then you would get more ideas from them as well. I'm not encouraging you to, to spend hordes of money if you can't afford it, but what I am telling you is that with regard to what you're presenting here, at least my opinion, and again, we've got other people on the committee here, I can't see a clear plan. And it concerns me that we would send this to the board with any kind of a recommendation to move forward without a complete plan.
I appreciate that.
Okay, like Pete. What is, when you introduced this, we told you that we sort of are on the side of caution, being conservative, and we- And we do that intentionally to make, see if the, one, the project will expand. And hopefully it does and benefits the county. But also to see it, how it fits in the community initially. And you've got, you know, you've got concerns here and Pete's brought up some good concerns as well, as well as Commissioner Gooden. Anyhow, that's, uh, we, we usually go that way. And that's why we were talking about being, uh, consistent on how we do this. Uh, one of our policies is that we normally do not move anything forward that doesn't, hadn't been VDOT checked off as far as the entrance. And right now, you don't have that.
We actually have had a approval for a specific space. They said it
Well, I understand, but we, we don't have any documentation in, 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 uh, what we've got. It didn't-
My understanding is they sent the information to you guys and-
Yeah. Anyway, we, we don't have it now. It's, it's up to the commission. We can push it forward, but normally what we do is table it till we have that.
And the, the number of people that they were looking at for the, the entrance that we had was 1,250 people. And, and they approved it. It was more than 610 feet from the curve on Rock Island Road. It was more than 500 feet from White Rock Road and it met all the VDOT.
Yeah, I don't think you'll have a problem getting it as long as you're willing to move it. Like I say, you've got a frontage on both roads.
Mm-hmm.
And you can move to the west, uh, uh, towards the intersection or you can move down White Rock Road and come in that way.
Correct, if you look at our driveway.
But we don't have any documentation saying we approved the, you know, from VDOT is what I'm getting at. So, uh, you've got some time to address these issues and see if, as Pete says, see if it fits your business plan. Uh, some of the concerns and the levels that we have talked about. Right now, to be consistent, we would have to drop the number of, your, your main, all main concern, or at least mine, well, I shouldn't speak for the whole commission, is your major events. Cause you, you know, you did reduce, give you credit, you cut it in half. You went from 2,500 to 1,200 and 50. Uh, but we have been doing somewhere in the neighborhood of 300, 400, maybe as much as 500, depending on, uh, the application and what you're trying to achieve with those events. So I guess my question to you is, uh, in my opinion, I, I don't have a problem. You've got 250 for your minor ones, uh, which I don't, I, I think we can live with that, at least I can. Uh, maybe double that for your major events, 500 on your initial startup. If things take off for you, uh,
It can always come back.
In five or 10 years, you have the ability to come back and ask for, uh, uh, you know, more leniency or ask for, you know, expansion of your property, you get, you get that, so.
Sounds fair.
That's, that's where we've been at. That's sort of the policy of this, uh, planning commission that we, we try to, are on the side of being a little cautious initially to make sure it works, but also make sure it fits in the community initially, so.
And, and our goal is to be good neighbors, to show everyone that we can do this in a responsible manner and, you know.
Right.
We're working really hard to, to raise our children.
I think reducing the number would, uh, initially to see how well things work for you and how well the community is receptive to it. Uh, I think would work in both favor of your neighbors, but also your business plan.
If it's 250 for the small and 500 for the large events, I'd be happy to.
Now, that's just my suggestion.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, the, the reduced number of people would be good. I, we talked to you before when you first came here about a startup. Cause you said it was going to be 10 years. And we suggested to you strongly that you start small. It's not going to be as offensive to your neighbors and, and they'll get an opportunity to see how well you manage it and how comfortable it would be for them. But I still would encourage you, if you're going to come back here, to come back with a plan. Come back and say, this is what I intend to do for septic. This is what I intend to do for traffic. And, and by the way, if I, if I do the math, it looks to me like you're going to have 24 events a year. Cause you got, you've got, uh, uh, blah, 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 six events annually.
Right.
Actually, yeah, total events, 24 per year.
Yes, sir.
So, again, coming back to what we're talking about, being smaller, I would suggest, again, very strongly, that you tell us what kind of events you want to have on a weekly or monthly basis, whether or not, again, um, as you, as was mentioned here already, whether or not they're seasonal or they're going to spread out over the year. But tell us what your plan is, how you, how you intend to manage this so that we can get comfortable passing this thing with a recommendation onto the board. Cause right now, I, I have no comfort in this. I, I, I don't know where it's going.
I, I totally understand. And with regards to the septic, I, I love the idea of composting toilets because it's low impact. But if it does pose a threat to the environment, we're happy to make a adjustment on that.
But you have to find that out. You, you have to find that out and come back and tell us what your decision is.
Yes, and when it comes to the plan, if you look at our full proposal, it does have a, a proposed spring, fall, winter, summer. It shows all the events that we kind of roughly would like to do on the, on the schedule. So if you look at the, the application, you'll see that.
All right.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. President.
So for the most part, my question is, for the most part, you do intend to do composting toilets?
Uh, if, if that's a-
And I'm asking for information because what I'm, got in my, what I have in my mind when I hear composting toilets is like outhouse.
Sir, I, ma'am, I, I absolutely understand that and I know why there's a concern. So let's just nix the, the composting toilets and we'll go to a approved type of septic that works with a clean system. So we won't be doing a septic, uh, uh, composting toilets.
Okay, and the sewage, uh, not the sewage, the trash, um, removing trash, I read that you want to have the people pack in and pack out.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's a good idea. And you're not supposed to litter on Virginia highways, but people throw trash in my yard all the time.
I see it all the time in my yard too.
You really don't have a way of, um, policing and ensuring that people are packing or are taking out what they bring in. So that had to be a system. And I was thinking that you're doing like a composting system for the trash also, was that what you're?
That would be for some of the trash, correct.
Okay. And the other point, I think the first application, you had a list of events that you were referring to.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, does that still hold in your mind? Because you adjusted the number of events and guests on the second sheet that we were given.
Yes, it'll still be the same type of events, we're not planning on-
Same type of events.
Mm-hmm.
But even the time schedule, um, that still holds?
Um, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Okay, you were suggesting on that first event, on that first part of the application, you were suggesting events at a different time of year.
Mm-hmm.
And that was my question of, in Buckingham, there's a season that we can do a lot of things. And then there are seasons when it's cold and nobody's coming out. Okay, and so are you trying to put a lot of events in a small time, like spring and summer?
Like I said, we're not-
Maybe early fall?
I mean, even, even to the late fall, we love the weather out here. The, the weather lately has been beautiful. I don't think that the weather is, is terrible here. I, even in the winter, I think we'd be able to hold some events. Because in the winter, there's not a lot of things going on. I think it would be really good to bring people out to us. So I, I do want to spread the events out throughout the year in, in a good way.
All right, and I have a, the other que- Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sure.
Okay, Nikki, got a question. Who, who covers fire pits and campfires? Who covers that?
So that would be covered just like, um, you and I would have a fire at home. So if there's a burn ban in place, we would not be able to burn, you know, within those parameters. But there is no, um, fire marshal, um, on staff with Buckingham County Administration. But any property owner would follow, um, rules set in place by Department of Forestry, usually Emergency Management Services also post these to the county website. So, and the Board of Supervisors also could, um, place an emergency burn ban as well, so.
Okay, so I'm just saying, I could build a fire pit to my specifications then?
Yes, yes, as long as it's, um, at a time where there's not a ban in place.
Okay, that's what I was asking. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
So first, I want to say that I think that your project, I think the intent is compliant with A1, um, both in terms of sharing the experience of your land and the UPIC and the wellness that comes with that, so. While I do agree that there needs to be equity in each proposal, I would like to bring up to the commission that this is not apples to apples. I think this proposal should be considered on its own merit because they will be housing people and other, none of our other applications have been. So with that, let's say you are saying, so you guys have proposed 750 attendees. Based on your proposed cottages and tent sites at maximum capacity, how many people would you plan to house overnight? How many people do you think, is that two people per tent? Are you housing, do you think overnight, half of the 750? What's your expectation?
That's a great question. I think our expectation is probably between one to two people per night in the tents. I, I don't see a lot of people sleeping in, in a tent together. I don't think that's really comfortable, so.
Okay, so of 750 attendees, how many?
Say 200 max.
Okay, good. Trying for a traffic impact we're talking about then.
Yeah, which will slow down-
500 people leaving, not 750 people leaving, that's what I was-
Or it would actually be 300 people leaving and not 500 people leaving.
Right, so I believe we have had some other cases. I don't think they're on your list, Joyce, for like Burmaster where we had, um, music festivals. So again, this is not exactly apples to apples, in my opinion. Um, so I'd like to consider this on its own merit.
Thank you.
I don't know what that number is that makes everyone comfortable, but I think there are some differences that we need to evaluate as a commission.
Mr. Chairman, I, I wholeheartedly agree. Uh, you can't, I, I mean, I understand the consideration, uh, our concern about not approving something for somebody and then approving it for someone else. But you're right, every land character, everyone, all these lots have characteristic differences. So I think the projects need to be evaluated and I'm glad you said it. Um, at the same time, in spite of the fact that your land may very well hold 750 people, my concern is not what your land can hold right now. My concern is how much you intend to manage. And again, like I said, you're sitting here and you're already changing things in agreement with the commission, which means we're designing your project for you. I don't want to do that. What I'd like to have you do is come back and tell us what you intend to do. What really is your application? I see the schedule, uh, of these events. I'd like to know specifically what you intend to do. I don't care if you do it by year, but you know, in the beginning, you don't intend to have 750 people. But maybe you intend to have 100 people and that's what you're shooting for. But my point is, what, what, what is a realistic plan for you? What can we look for from you in development so that we can turn this thing over comfortably with a good recommendation to the people who are going to ultimately, uh, provide you an approval? Right now, I don't see it and that's what concerns me. Irrespective to the fact that you may have flat land or hilly land or, or, or some other kind of waterway going through your property. You've already heard all those concerns and as you're listening to them, you're redesigning your project. And I'm saying, I, take what's being said here, design a project and come to us and tell us what you're going to do and how you're going to do it and we'd be happy to go ahead and consider that. That's my point.
I appreciate what you're saying, sir. And I, and I do want you to know that we've gone into this. Actually, people here who have encouraged us to aim high when we first came here because they thought that being in Buckingham County, there would be a lot of pushback about the numbers. So if we aimed high to begin with, we would be able to meet our ultimate goal, which 500 is a fine number for our family to, to start with. And if we can build it past that and do it in a responsible manner, I would be happy to show you guys that we're capable of doing this. And when it comes to something like the retreat center, we're not going to build a lodge in year one. That's going to be, you know, three or four years down the road, once we've established something. We can build a couple of guest cottages a year potentially. If we, if we have the time and, and the finances to support it, we'd like to, to build something piece by piece. Do it with our families, show our kids a good work ethic and do it in a manner that, that encourages community too. We want to bring community members to help with this thing. We, we've been talking about it. We'd like to encourage Buckingham residents to come and, and for all of the events for the first year, we would like to in- invite all Buckingham residents to come for free regardless of if there's a fee or not. And we'd like to, to build a, a reputation with the community where we can show that this is a family-friendly space. We're not planning on having a bunch of drunk drivers on, on the, on the space. And that's one of the reasons why we'd like to have a, a, a place for people to sleep. If they do, on their own merit, decide to drink or, or, we don't encourage any of that. That's not our goal is to have a space for that. But if it makes it a safer place for, for other residents, I think it's a good idea for us to have a space for them to, to sleep and, and.
Yeah, well then one, again, my, my last recommendation to you is what I already said to you earlier. You're concerned about your community. It seems to me that you ought to put a project together and then explain it to your community. Maybe you get together at the library or wherever else and have a small community meeting. Say, look, this is a major undertaking and this is what it's going to do to the community. We want you to know we're proceeding responsibly and listen to their concerns.
Understood.
That, that would be my recommendation. It's your, it's your project.
We have, we have our neighbors who are absolutely the closest to us. All three of them have come and given their blessing to us. They literally, I can see their light through the woods. It's a, a, a stone throat from our house. And they're within a, a very short walk of where the retreat center and the, and the event space would be.
Then you have these people who are also close.
Yes, sir, and we have spoken with both of them before they put out this petition, telling them that we'd be happy to work with lower numbers and they won't work with us in any matter. So whatever number we say, it's not going to be okay with them. So I don't know if that's, if that's even going to benefit us in any way. You could ask them right now and see if there's a number that they're comfortable with and I-
No, we're not going to start this open forum here, no.
That's not what happens.
That, that's not what I'm asking you to do. What I'm asking you to do is take into consideration all that you've heard and what, even from the commission and come back with a plan. Tell us what you intend to do. Cause right now, I don't see any solid plan. I see what you've written, but I've heard numbers all the way from 750 down to 250. I mean, tell us what you want to do so that we can understand the application and then forward it. I'm not asking for a, a detailed project plan, I'm asking for an overview.
Sir, we want to host markets, we want to host weddings for, for people. We would like to have music and, and family events, family gatherings. We'd love to have, you know, a Renaissance fair. We have all of these things in our proposal. I, I want that to be very clear. We have a plan. This is not just, we're coming up here and winging it. We've been thinking about this for a long time. This is one of the reasons why we live in this place, because it's beautiful and it, it encourages people to come out into nature and, and see the beauty here and, and encourages-
I, I, I appreciate it, not standing around, thank you.
I'm the same. Joyce, you have another question? Yeah, I thought you, you don't have a question.
That's my question. What are we doing?
Well-
Because-
Make a vote.
Pardon?
Make a vote, but don't hold until they- Well, that's what I'm saying, we don't have it from VDOT. And our policy is to normally to table it till we get there.
Till we get-
And hopefully he'll have it in, uh, you know, 30 days or so and can come back. That'll give him a time to review his application, maybe answer some of the questions that Pete's got.
Because our job is not to help them come up with a business plan.
Well, right.
So that's why I'm asking, what are we doing? Where are we going?
Well, I made a suggestion.
You've said it before.
Again, my main concern is, is the major events, which he's got scheduled for, uh, I think six events annually.
Once a month.
Correct. And, uh, the number for that, that, that's my main concern. The others, the minor stuff, that's not that, uh, large of- I, I suggested 500, so.
That's fair.
Would that fit with your business plan?
Yes, sir.
We're not here to try to impede or stop, you know, make you change completely what you're trying to do. We're just trying to make it work for not only you, but the, the neighborhood as well.
Absolutely, and if we can show that we do this in a very responsible manner, we can, we can come back later if we need to grow. Maybe that's the perfect number for us. Maybe it has the perfect size gathering that-
Well, like I say, our normal policy is because you don't, we don't have documentation of the entrance or approval by VDOT, we usually table it. And that would, uh, you know, until you get that letter, which it might be, you know, in time to do, be back here next month, uh, that would give us a chance to think more, but also give you an opportunity to review what we've told you, but also what you've heard from your neighbors as far as, uh, potentials, problems and all to address them. You know, the, one thing I'd like to know is, is again, of course, we talked about that, is, is the compost files. Uh, what maybe the health department, how do they perceive that? Would they have a better solution for you or something alternative?
If you like, I, I have the text from the VDOT people who can, I can show you the approval of the space right now.
Yes.
But that should be in your packet when you submit-
I thought that was already sent to you.
Okay.
There, in, in his application, they were-
There, in, in his application, they received a statement from Brian Locker and I included it again in an email.
But it doesn't say where, does it?
From the health depart, from the.
The health department, he wouldn't obtain from the health department because he doesn't have permission to build anything without the special use permit. And the very first condition in all of the special use permits is that they must adhere to local, state and federal guidelines. So if any portion of this application that hypothetically were to be approved, William would contact myself, Tommy Rance, the building inspector and complete a zoning building permit application. Before a building permit would ever be issued, the health department would have to sign off on whatever well and septic design has been submitted to them and meets the state guidelines.
Right, I, I understand that. I just wanted to see if they had all the information in regards to compost. I've never, I'm not been privy to, yeah. You know, not, not a decision, just, just information from the health department is how they perceive it. That's all I was asking for.
Well, we've, we've talked to the health department and we've done all that we can up to this point to meet their requirements and we have to have an approval in order to, to move forward with any of that. So you do have the, the VDOT approval?
VDOT, VDOT's here. What it states is the traffic impact statement is not required. The traffic generated by the proposed zoning change development does not exceed normal threshold. Does the entrance meet VDOT's requirements for the proposed use? The answer is no. If no, explain. So Mr. Locker goes on to state that the existing access serving 1048 Rock Island Road is not located and constructed to serve the proposed use. A new entrance shall be located and constructed in accordance with VDOT's agritourism, moderate volume, commercial entrance guidelines. And he references the manual and appendix. Use of the secondary access on Route 20 located at the coordinate cited above to verica, to a verification that the applicant has legal access to the connection through, um, I can't read it all. It's cut off through an easement. Access improvements may be required and will be evaluated at the time that the applicant pursues use of the access. The applicant is to contact the Farmville residency. So the, um, two proposed entrances, um, that the applicant had, they were evaluated by Brian Locker, who's the assistant residency engineer. I'm sure if he has another one as here, that, um, he would go through those requirements. And a VDOT approval is necessary to have a building permit as well.
Correct. That's all I'm saying and that's been the policy of this commission until we have our dental package.
So we're not waiting on anything from VDOT?
No, we had a statement as part of his application.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that. Where is the location at, this place specifically?
For a second time under, um, Indigo Acres VDOT comments because I was asked by a commission member to go back and ask what was the Route 20, um, access. I did that and when I did that, it also copied, um, Brian Locker's response to Kira and William into this email as well. They, but it was evaluated on time. They had this in the last, um.
Well, I stand corrected then. I didn't realize that they had, I knew they were going to ask him to move it, but I didn't know where was that.
So they, they haven't moved it. It, they state that the 1048, which is their home address, doesn't meet the proposed use. And it says that what was on Route 20, which I think may have been, correct me, Kira spoke with me this morning, was a, a prescriptive easement. They, they were not interested in using that at all. They recognized that they had Rock Island and White Rock. They would go back to Brian Locker with that new entrance on White Rock so that he could evaluate that.
On Rock Island.
On Rock, whichever one. Did you have, you have road access on White Rock and Rock Island, so.
Okay. All three roads, actually.
So they could come, so if everybody wanted to, VDOT could, um, come back and look at secondary and, um, other proposed.
No, that's fine if that's, if they have approved on Rock, Rock Island Road.
Tried to get Brian Locker to attend this meeting, but he was out of the office.
It's a little confusing, but, okay, so he, they, I'm sure it was sight distance, so they moved it to the west, up towards the intersection.
Towards White Rock, correct. If you look at my, my driveway, there's one, two, three telephone poles from, the third one, which is probably 500 feet.
Which is getting you away, getting you slightly, getting you away from the curve, sharp curve.
It's, it's probably 700, 800 feet away from that curve, correct.
Okay, I didn't quite understand what, uh, came through then. Well, we've got that, so do you want to still table it and give him an opportunity to review the suggestions we made or?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
That would be my motion. I'm going to defer to the rest of the commission, but I think we ought to table it because there's been so many ups and downs in this conversation and as was mentioned, we're not here to design this project. I'd like to have everything that was agreed to in one spot so I can read it and say, yeah, this is what you want to do.
I'd second that.
Okay. Did everyone understand the motion? Basically tabling it until we get more information on exactly, uh, his business plan.
Can you give me an idea of exactly what you need? Because we've given you a pretty detailed plan.
Well, I think the primary thing is the, uh, well, two things, just, but the primary thing is the, uh, amount of people and the, uh, the maximum.
What does that have to do with the plan?
What it has for us to decide whether we want to allow it. In other words, your number of people you got. You, you did drop it and you're at 750 with the others as well. And that's what you're regards to, Pete, you're talking about.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm interested in understanding what you intend to do and with how many people and when. It's just, I just want a simple application that tells us, I've got your schedule of events here. What I want to know is how many people do you intend?
On year one, year two, like all the way through year 10, what, what exactly do you need?
Well, I don't know. You, you, it's your project. You tell me. All right, you've already been requested to bring down the number of people. Somebody requested from this commission 250 people last week or last month when I talked to you. It was at 500 and it was, you gave, you gave us a nod on that. So what I want to know is what does your project include? Is it 500? Is it 750? Is it 250? What are you happy to have and, and in what, how, how are you going to do it?
We'd be happy to have 500 people six times a year, no more than once a month, 250 people for the rest of the events. I think that's pretty clear.
We have a motion. Do you want to table that motion to, or you want to go along with it?
You have a second here.
I have a motion and a second. We're discussing it now. Uh, he's agreed to drop to 500 and 250, right?
Not sure I see the benefit in tabling it if it's just like any other planning commission meeting where we're just dis, distinguishing what the conditions are going to be. I think if he's agreed that to the condition of 500, I think we just need to decide if we accept that or not.
Right, well, it's only fair to him to make a call on that if that's what we're feel comfortable with. Yes, go ahead.
I know VDOT had, I, I don't quite understand the VDOT proposal, but I still would, I know where this road has got to go in between Mr. Rose and May Wood and I don't, they're going to have a problem, you know. They've stated that all this traffic coming into their house or right by their house is still a problem. And I don't know if VDOT could go back and come up with something else, but it's still a problem to the community where, what I'm seeing. So that's my, my thought. You're going to have a thousand cars coming in between these two families. We still got a problem.
There's no way to have a thousand cars with 500 people, sir. I don't.
Well, 500.
We also plan on encouraging carpooling. Our, our goal is not to have 500 people in 500 cars. It's not. I can't imagine that being a normal size event. That would be absurd for every single person to drive himself.
Your concern is to move it from White Rock, um, Rock Island to White Rock.
I just want everybody to be comfortable with the neighbors comfortable with it. That's what I want. I, with all the traffic coming in from either side, whereas, I mean, if you go from White Rock, you got to build a road all the way across your property, plus you got to go build another road all the way across your property with two of them. It's still a problem, so. I'd just like for you to think about what you're getting into.
Okay, any more discussion? Got to make them changes and, and bring him back next month because we're nice, put it on hold, voted for it, so. Now we're going to need to vote. Okay, everybody, remember what the motion was. We're going to table it till, uh, next month. So he can come back with, answer some of these questions that Pete's brought up as well as some of the other commissioners. If there's not any more discussion, we'll vote on that.
Is that okay?
All right, take your vote. Okay, we're seven commissioners. Want you to come back next month. So it'd be tabled. You, yeah, what we're trying to do is what Mr., is just to get more information. But we've got you at 500 and 250 now. That's what you agreed now.
Yes, sir.
If, you know, if you, if you study your business plan and that level is not going to work for you, we need to know that. Okay, thank you, sir. Nikki, do we have Mr. White here?
We do. He will be joining us by phone.
Oh, okay, great.
Jamie's, just give, uh, Jamie just a moment. Yep, you want it.
Do we have anybody signed up for the public hearing?
Sir.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and then I'm going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, while, um, Mr. Shoemaker is preparing for this, um, call in, uh, we do not have anyone signed up in person for this, but I did receive, um, a letter today from a neighbor. I put a copy at, um, each of the planning commission members and Mr. Allen's, um, station, so.
Oh, you, we need to read that for the record then? Okay, all right, well. I'll go ahead and open up the, uh, public hearing and you read that.
Hello?
Mr. White, can you hear us?
I saw that, hey, yellow little person. Hello?
Hey, Mr. White, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, you're on with the planning commission, sir.
Okay, this is record.
Okay. Nick, if you would go ahead and read one letter.
Okay, uh, this is from Gary and Annette, Big U at 2399 Scott's Bottom Road, Dilwyn. Um, they have concerns regarding proposed short-term rental and event venue on adjacent property. It states, dear board members, we are the abutting property owners at 2399 Scott's Bottom Road, tax map 139-5-2 and 139-5-1D. We want to be clear that we are not here to oppose a true small bed and breakfast. Our concern is that the application also requests approval to operate an event center with gatherings of up to 40 people. That is very different use in the middle of an A1 district. Our home set's only about 500 feet from the likely event area with an open field in between. Sound carries extremely well across that field. We can hear two people speaking on that property from our front porch. In 2017, this board attached a specific noise-related conditions to the compressor station, SUP noise studies, silencers, monitoring and violation triggers because neighbors ask for meaningful protection. We are requesting the same level of protection here. The zoning ordinance states that the A1 zoning district is meant to preserve rural character and provide and prevent substantial adverse impacts on adjoining, adjoining properties. An event center of the type proposed could cause such an impact. For that reason, we respectfully request that this SUP be approved only if the following conditions are attached. Each of you has been provided with this handout, suggested conditions. Limits on large events, a maximum of 10 gatherings per calendar year where more than the allotted B and B guest are present at one time. All other gatherings should be limited to the occupants of the permitted B and B rooms and should only occur during daylight hours between sunrise and sunset. There should be no outdoor gatherings of any type before dawn or after dusk. Allow 10 large events per year, generous enough to accommodate weddings and showers, but not enough to create a full-scale commercial event business. Noise standards, for any activity under the special use permit that produces noise, we, we request the board apply the same rule standards used in the past A1 SUPs, consistent with Virginia DEQ Rural Guidance. 55, um, less than 55 decibels daytime, less than 45 decibels nighttime. Measured A-weighted fast response at five feet above ground at adjacent property lines. These plainly audible standards already used in other Buckingham SUPs protect the quiet enjoyment that A1 zoning is intended to maintain. Number three, noise mitigation improvements, applicant-funded. Before constructing or operating the B and B event center, the applica, applicant should be required to install at their expense an eight-foot tall solid board-on-board or solid vinyl fence, no gaps, not chain link, et cetera, along the entire shared, shared boundary with our property or an equivalent earth berm. Addition should include a double row staggering planting of evergreen trees, minimum eight to 10 feet tall at planting, spaced nowhere than 10 feet apart, placed immediately inside or outside the fence or berm. These improvements should be designed and certified by a Virginia licensed acoustical engineer or landscape architect to demonstrate compliance with the plainly audible noise standards. An eight-foot solid fence combined with eight to 10-foot evergreens is the same specification used in Loudon, Falkir and other Virginia counties for event venues. Enforcement, any verified noise complaint should trigger an immediate county inspection. Two or more violations within a 12-month period should require placing the SUP on the board's agenda for possible revocation. Five, overall compliance, all of these conditions should apply to the B and B portion of the special use permit as well as for events. A B and B should be a serene and quiet environment that adds character to a neighborhood and not become a nuisance. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Gary J and Annette N, Big U.
All right, I'll close since we have no other. I'll close the public hearing, turn it over to the commission. Mr. White is on the phone. Any questions for you?
Yeah, I've got, uh, Mr. Chairman, please. Under the proposal to the Buckingham County Board of Supervisors, I'm looking at, uh, short-term rental in a renovated barn, weekend travelers, families, long-stay professionals. What does that mean?
Re, what, would you repeat that, please?
Yeah, you've got something in here that says, uh, long-stay professionals. Would you describe that for me? I'd like to know what long-stay means and what do you intend to do with families? Are they going to be there more than a weekend, more than a week?
Yeah, no, we're talking about a long-stay would consider, uh, would consider, be considered a week.
All right, so we're, we're not talking about.
We're not.
We're not talking about.
We're not talking.
Right, okay. Yeah, I just.
We're not talking.
I'm sorry.
We're not, we're not talking about having a Airbnb where someone will come in and stay for 30 days, 60 days. I wish, but that's not the case here.
Okay, thank you. That, that answered my question. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other?
Uh, Mr. White, at last month's meeting, you mentioned that you were just hoping to have private events for either yourself or the people that would be using the Airbnb, um, by some of the, the byright here in the county, that those small private events are allowed. What is the benefit in applying for an event center? Are there any type of events that we're missing here as a board?
I'm getting a lot of echoing, but, uh, could you repeat that?
Sure, so I'm just inquiring about the nature of the events that you intend to hold. Are these just going to be, you know, birthday parties and, you know, as you said, things under 40? I'm, I'm trying to understand why you applied for an event center.
Well, the events that I anticipate would be, uh, let's just say, for example, you rented it for a weekend. If you decided that you want to have a birthday party or whatever, then all of the other, uh, conferences would apply. You know, you can't, you know, uh, have loud music. You can't have alcohol. You got to have security. You got to do to this, you got to do to that. To make sure that, you know, safety and consideration of the neighbors is, uh, first and foremost.
Does that answer your question?
It does answer my question. It will initiate some conversation amongst the board later. But yes, for the applicant, that answers the question. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
With regard to the last question, the events, are you planning to have those inside or would they be outside?
Well, it depends upon the party. If it's, uh, say 10 people, then it could be inside. If they decided that they wanted to, uh, go out to the, uh, uh, out to the yard with some picnic tables or whatever and have like, uh, a little cookout or a camp event, also plan to put up a, uh, a tent that would accommodate, uh, again, no more than 40. also plan to set up a, uh, a tent that would accommodate, uh, again, no more than forty people at one time.
Thank you.
Mr. White, uh, the number of attendees will not, you asked for forty as a maximum, is that still the same?
Yeah, so are we not looking at, uh, you know, forty, fifty people as enough space to accommodate, you know? So we are asking for forty, uh, hoping that, uh, you know, we can re- uh, remain within that, those boundaries. Now, just in case, uh, uh, someone says, okay, I'm having a wed- wedding and I'm have, I want to have it out in the yard and we want to invite sixty or sixty-five people, then I, I imagine I would have to come back and to the board and ask permission, is that correct?
Well, if you set the maximum, uh, number higher, you wouldn't have to do that to, uh, feel that you might need fifty or sixty and everything would be fall underneath that.
Okay, why don't we do seventy-five? Because there's enough room, seventy-five people, the yard space and open space that we have there. If we did seventy-five people, uh, I don't anticipate that large of a crowd, uh.
You still have, uh, you'll have the park and accommodate that if you, if you were to have a crowd that large, correct?
Yeah, what we have, uh, I mean, nothing is actually going to change from, you know, what I'm doing at present, uh, other than the fact that the house, the five-bedroom would be available, uh, if a group wanted to come. And the great thing about this is, uh, I noticed that you're putting up a fifty-five-room, uh, hotel right there in Dilwyn. So if I had forty or fifty people that was coming to an event, they could actually stay at the hotel. But here again, what I'm saying to you is that I, I never anticipate having more than ten people, uh, to actually stay in the house.
Okay, do you have an idea how many, uh, possibly events you will have annually that may have fifty people?
No, I have no idea, I, 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 uh, will have to wait to see what the booking look like, but, uh, I'm not looking at having no more than, uh, one or maybe two events, uh, there because I'm there almost every weekend, uh, so, uh, when I'm coming, uh, my family and I, when we come down, of course, that would eliminate, so to make a long story short, let's just say two events a month. Uh, that might happen, uh, one would be better, especially, you know, with the grandkids and all that.
Okay, so you're, you're asking for an increase of seventy-five total, you know, uh, being generous. But you also think you may have events w- once a month, at twelve?
Yeah, I'll say, let's just say twice a month because I, I have some friends at church that said they would like to come down to visit. So, you know, uh, with that being said, uh, I belong to two or three ministries, so I might want to invite, you know, one of my ministries down, the members of my ministry down, and we just keep, you know, kick out for a weekend. Uh, and I would count that as an event.
Okay, so that would be twenty-four potential events and seventy-five potential maximum number of people.
Right.
Okay, all right. Any other questions from the commissioners?
I have a, a comment there, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think if, uh, the, and again, just to guess, the surrounding community knew that there was going to be up to seventy-five people on three acres, uh, two events a month, there might have been some other conversation. I have a little problem with the number of, uh, events and the number of people. I thought it was pretty reasonable to begin with, but I'm, I'm beginning to be a little nervous about this.
Well, you know, we can set it at whatever number that is agreeable with the, uh, the board. Uh, seventy-five is more than I, you know, I can imagine, well, I guess my imagination is good, so I could imagine seventy-five, but for what, for what I want to do right now, uh, forty people would be the max. If it's filled over to seventy-five, then that would be extreme.
Okay. How do the commissioners feel about those levels, an event, number of events?
Original application was for forty people, right?
Right.
Willing to keep it at that, I think that doesn't change anything.
All right, do you have a proposal down, you want to put a limit on, stick with the forty? I don't have a problem with fifty, uh, but we probably ought to also have a number of events if we're to, if we're going to allow, allow this.
And, and, uh, let me just interject this. What I anticipate, uh, I don't know if this is going to happen in a bar or not, is basically a true truth. You know, I'm not talking about, uh, a group of, uh, college students or teenagers or young folks. I'm seventy-nine, I really don't want to be hanging around with, you know, thirty, forty, you know, what I'm saying, younger folks. And I don't know if that's, would be considered, uh, maybe I'll just say it's going to be fifty-five and over, older, I don't know. But I want, I want to make it clear that this is not going to be a, uh, place where people can come and act crazy.
Understood.
No, we're not having that. And if we get a large number of people, uh, I'm a retired police officer and I believe that, uh, if you planned an event correctly, you won't have no problems. So in my planning, what I would anticipate is contacting, uh, local law enforcement and say, hey, look, we're having an event, we expect the forty people, uh, can you give me special attention? Or if you have some off-duty people, would they be willing to, you know, uh, and I don't know if the church will allow them to do it or not, but I, I guess they would, uh, provide security.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know, you know, it seems to me that he originally came up with a forty-person plan, I thought, I was comfortable with that. Maybe, and I don't know how this affects your plan, but again, we, we just had this conversation with somebody else. If we agreed to, uh, or if you agreed, this is your design, to forty people maximum once a month, at least to start, to see how this thing worked out, would that make sense for you?
That, that, that makes a lot of sense. Uh, if we can start out with forty people.
Maximum.
Once a month. And then let's just suppose, uh, I get a request for three people, three events. I, it ain't never going to be more than three, but then I would anticipate coming back to the board and reporting on what's going on in terms of activity. And then we would revisit this again. You may allow me to make some, uh, adjustments or you may not. I'm good with that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly what we said, if, if in fact he finds his business is growing to where he needs more than one event per month, yeah, he's welcome to come back and talk to us. But, I mean, I think to start out with, that's a much reas- much more reasonable approach.
Right, I'm ready.
All right, Mr. White, you, you're in agreement with that, correct? Mr. White?
Yes.
Uh, I'd say you're in agreement with the forty and, and twelve, forty people and twelve events, ma- maximum.
Right, right.
Very good, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that would be one a month, we're not talking seasonality here, right?
Right, once a month.
Once a month.
And forty people, okay.
Maximum forty people.
Right, there'll be conditions, there'll be two conditions on the application. Any, I'm ready. Have a motion to, with the two, uh, limiting conditions to move this forward, do I have a second?
Slow move.
I have a motion and a second.
Stop motioning.
Any further discussion?
There we go, hold on, we got to get the motion made.
I think Danny made the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
I second, I guess I seconded it.
Yeah, you seconded it.
All right.
All right, uh, four votes, any other condition, discussion, excuse me, all right, we'll vote then. Mr. White, that passes and you, you're moving forward to the board of supervisors.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. White, good luck on it, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, have a good Thanksgiving, sir. We have no new business, Nikki, that brings us to your reports.
Uh, I'll just have a, a couple of things, number one, yay, we made it, tonight was a long night. Um, you have lots of hard work ahead of you with these applications, I see that each time, some of the requests become more and more complex. I do anticipate, um, two applications from individuals who've been working on their, um, applications, all of their documents for the last couple of months for event centers as well, so, um, they should be to you at the December meeting, which brings me directly to the December meeting. As has been the case, um, typically near the holidays, November, Thanksgiving kind of caught us a little bit, uh, this time. The scheduled meeting for December will be the twenty-second, which is the week of Christmas. Do you wish to hold it the night of the twenty-second or would you like to hold your regular meeting on the night of the, uh, work session, tentative work session date, which would be Monday, December fifteenth?
That would be the, uh, twenty, fifteenth, December fifteenth. Probably makes more sense from my standpoint, how's other commissioners feel? Okay, we'll move it to the fifteenth, uh, it'd be a regular scheduled meeting on the work session.
That does leave time, I don't have any public hearings now, the three cases of the four have moved forward to the board of supervisors and will be introduced December eighth, and the case for Indigo Acres will be back with no public hearing because, um, the applicant needs to provide, uh, more information on their plan, as indicated this evening. I think I have that correct.
Will that be at the next meeting?
The next meeting will be Indigo Acres, that will be your old business, uh, for them to discuss, and then, um, I would anticipate a couple of introductions for new business.
Just a, just a, if you would, I'd like to have, I've, I've got surgery on the tenth of December. I, if I could get something ahead of that, I could, projects before I go into the hospital, would you mind?
So you will receive your, um, I don't know if I'll have the packet ready prior to the tenth. The tenth, I believe, is, um, the Wednesday prior to the December fifteenth, so I would have the packet ready then. If I receive something, um, if the introductions come in, I, you know, can forward those in a rough manner to you. Um, and if Indigo Acres provides anything new between now, um, and the tenth, I will just send it on to all of you, but please know it'll be in the packet on the tenth, but.
Any other things, Nikki? Okay, that brings us to commission matters of concern, any of the commissioners have anything they need to discuss at this time? Then I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. We're moved.
Okay, I got a motion and a second, any discussion? And we'll vote, and that's unanimous, I called it.
I got it excited, I didn't turn off my screen.
Thank everyone, everybody have a good Thanksgiving.